I want to call this meeting to order. Join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge to the life of United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Kratz, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Amadis.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Thank you. Here.
Mrs. Douglas.
Here.
Mr. Means.
Here.
Mr. Nagel.
Here.
Mrs. Rule.
Here.
Mr. Bakuza.
Present.
Mr. Workmeister.
Here.
I'm members present.
Thank you. Before we get into our agenda this evening, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize three school directors who are participating in their final meeting with us and to thank them for their years of service and dedication to the Bethel Park School District, its students, staff, families, and taxpayers. Tonight, we thank Ron Workmeister, who has served on this board for the past four years. Ron has been a valuable member of our team. He did a great job chairing our Facilities and Services Committee, and we could always count on him to ask the necessary questions and make suggestions to ensure we were proceeding correctly. Ron, we will miss your warm smile, kind heart, and genuine interest in the district.
Thank you.
We are also saying thank you and farewell to Jim Means, who has been a school director for eight years. Mr. Means chaired our Policy Committee, and even before he was elected, he was involved with the school district. Years ago, I had the opportunity to work with Jim on policies pertaining to homeschooling. Jim, from one West Virginia grad to another, thank you for your eight years of service. We appreciate everything that you were able to bring to the table.
Go Ears, right?
Yep. We are also saying goodbye tonight to David Amadis, whose 20 years of service on the Board is second only to Mrs. Rule's tenure. David has chaired several committees over the years, most recently our Finance Committee, and if there was ever a school director who kept our students as their number-one priority, it was you, Mr. Amadis. I've known you since our days together as parents at William Penn, and it's been fun campaigning with you as we were on the same election cycle and ran for the Board together numerous times. I did a little bit of research, and over the past 20 years, did you know that you've had the pleasure of working with 23 different Board members?
That's no, I didn't. Wow.
We thank you for two decades of service and commitment to children, which included serving on this Board when we went through our budget issues in the early 2000s, helping to upgrade all of our schools and making the new Bethel Park High School a reality. We appreciate your guidance, wisdom, and steady presence. We are pleased this evening to present a Service to Education Award to all three of It reads, "Bethel Park School District Service to Education Award. Thank you for your unfailing service and dedication to the Bethel Park School District, November 19, 2019." In addition to this service award, we would also like to present Mr. Amadis with an orange -- let me see if I can get it out -- marble apple in recognition of your 20 years on the Board. We hope this apple will serve as a special reminder to you of all the students in the Bethel Park School District that you have so faithfully represented over the years. At this time, will Mr. Means and Mr. Workmeister join me over by Mr. Amadis so I can present these awards to all of you? And will the audience please join me in a round of applause for these two? Thank you, students. And now, would each of you like to say? You can sit back down and you can have the microphone to say what you might want to say at this time in time. I'll sit down, Mr. Means, and see. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vicki.
I guess I'll start with the oldest one on the end. Mr. Amadis, would you?
I was going to say maybe a few comments later. I would just say, first of all, I had thought about maybe saying that I had served with a lot of school Board members. I didn't realize it was 23 members. Just don't ask me to name all of them at this present time of any work. But I did enjoy my time on the Board. I have enjoyed it very much. I learned a lot from all the members I was on the Board with. I appreciate so much of all the community putting their trust in me. That's five times I had a run, and five times I was voted on by the community. So I appreciate all the community trust to put in me. I tried to do my best that I could do each time by looking through all the issues and trying to make sure I did the best for the students and the entire community of the district with every vote I made, no matter how it was throughout. I miss some of the Board members that wouldn't be here that I served with. I was really close to a few of them. Most recently, of course, Mrs. Buckley, and her not being here, and I sure as heck missed her. I want to thank as well my family. They're not here, but they're at home, and they were the ones that put up with me for 20 years not being here, and so I will get to spend some more time with them. And as one former Board member said, I think it's going to give me some more time to go and do some reading. And there's a few of you on here that will know what was meant by that.
Yeah, to that library, I know.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Mr. Workmeister?
Well, I was -- I have a speech for the end, so I don't want to infringe too much on that, but I would like to say a few words right now. First, thank you, Mrs. Cook, for all your service, very much so, I mean, and all the guidance that you have given me being here on the four years. And I do thank the Board for also, you know, being part of, you know, making our district number one. And also, I thank all the people, the voters that got me in the first time, and also for the faculty, and I'm starting to give my speech here, so I don't want to go into it. But one thing I do want to say that Mr. Amadis said that I do feel strongly about is we do miss Cindy dearly. She was a big help for making it fun, and I just enjoyed being on the Board. I think everybody in the community should think about, at one point or another, going on the Board and learning, because there's a lot to learn, and it gives you a whole different perspective as to what is involved with all the decisions. It's, believe me, most people don't have a clue as to what goes on in this, you know, administration and how it works. So I was grateful to be part of it, and I'm glad. So I'll talk more later, but thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Means?
Well, like Ron, I have a speech for later on, so I'm not going to say too much other than the fact that this caught me completely by surprise, and whoever made it happen, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Cook, last but not least, we have one more farewell presentation this evening, and this one is for you. Way back in 2003, the Bethel Park Board of School Directors appointed you to the Board to fill an unexpired term of a Board member who resigned. You were overwhelmingly elected to fill that term in November of 2003. Like so many Board members, your interest in the district began as a parent of Bethel Park students. For many years, you have been actively involved with the district, first as a PTO member and president, ultimately serving as the PTO Council's president. Your leadership skills with the PTO easily translated to the school Board, as you have led the Board as our president with a steady hand in the past 10 years. Your organizational skills have served us well, keeping us on task and always appraised of the issues that were before us. Like Mr. Amadis, you can be proud of the long list of accomplishments you were a part of over the past 16 years, including guiding the district out of more than $2 million deficit to where we are today with a healthy fund balance to carry the district into the future, building a new state-of-the-art Bethel High School, renovating all of our other schools to make sure our roofs and HVAC units were upgraded, approving the expenditure of over $1 million to provide every one of our students with one-on-one technology, making our schools safe through added security measures, including the creation of our own school police force, and supporting an educational environment that promotes hands-on STEAM activities at all levels of instruction. Additionally, your leadership enabled the high school to receive the 2013 Building Excellence Award from the Masters Builders Association of Western Pennsylvania, the 2016 D. Richard Winn Award from the University of Pittsburgh Tri-State Area School Study Council, the 2016 Magna Honorable Mention Award from the National School Boards Association, and 2019 recognition from the Allegheny Conference. Over the years, you have worked with 19 different Board members, who all ran for this office because they had strong ideas about how to improve the district. For the past 10 years, we have looked to you for leadership. You made it look easy, melding all of those ideas to form a Board that worked seamlessly together through the good and the not-so-good times. You should feel proud of all that you have done for the Bethel Park School District. You leave us with a huge void in leadership, as well as a positive legacy and blueprint of what can be accomplished when Boards work together for the greater good. As long as I have been on the Board, we have recognized our outgoing president with a gavel plaque to commemorate their years of leadership. But as a former president myself, I didn't think the gavel plaque adequately symbolized all that you have accomplished. Instead, it's my honor to present you with this memory dome created specifically for you. I won't explain everything that's in the dome right now, but you can see it contains miniature mementos, such as a gavel, your name plaque, and some photos to help you fondly remember your time with us. We give these out at the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, and it just has all the aspects of what you've done in education, since you're on the Board.
Thank you. For all the speeches I have presented through the years, this one was somehow the most difficult to create and now to read. It has truly been my honor to have served for these past 16 years, and most especially to have been elected for 10 years as the President of the Bethel Park School Board. It was also such an honor to receive the D. Richard Winn Award along with my fellow Board members in 2016. This was awarded to us in recognition of demonstrated professionalism, integrity, and leadership in supporting an evolving culture of collaboration, improved relationships, and instructional innovation, all of which benefited the students of Bethel Park. Education is so important to me, beginning with my profession as a speech-language pathologist, to my service as a PTO member and president at numerous Bethel Park Schools, BAC member, CCC member, various district committee memberships, PTA/PTO Council president, and ultimately leading to my 16-year service on the Bethel Park School Board. I have had such a fulfilling time as an educational leader. I have so many to thank, beginning with my family, most of whom I didn't think were going to be here this evening because the stomach bug had hit us, so I was surprised that some made it. Thank you, family. My dear friends and neighbors, my fellow parents, and the village of Bethel Park that helped me to raise my two sons and continue to help with all of the students in our great district, including, very shortly, my granddaughter, Alice Rose. A great group of central office staff sitting here to the left and the right, most of whom I have been involved in hiring through the years. It's been my great pleasure to work with all of you through these years. And, Mr. Keith, I'm very sad to note that we will be accepting your resignation for the purpose of retirement. I'm happy for you on that, but very sad that that will be happening this evening. A terrific group of central office secretaries who have assisted me through the years, most importantly, retired member Jackie McLaughlin and current Superintendent Secretary Marybeth Gregg. Principals, teachers, and staff out in the trenches. I will miss visiting your buildings and classrooms and seeing all the innovative things you are doing on a daily basis. Our facilities and maintenance staff, our bus drivers and aides, our IT department, and the list goes on and on, our nursing staff. I hope I haven't missed anybody. The person sitting to my left, our attorney, Mrs. Trish Andrews, your guidance has been greatly appreciated through the years. And the person to my right, without question, the best superintendent I have had the pleasure to work alongside, and I have interviewed and worked with so many to numerous to count. One thing I want to mention about Dr. Pascarella and the majority of our central office staff, they are a roll-up-your-sleeves-and-get-the-job-done kind of people, people I admire the most, the hard workers. I will miss the experiences we have shared, but leave with such great memories of all that we have accomplished together. Serving as president for 10 years, I had important people at my side, my VPs, starting with Mr. Dick Rose. Sorry, Dick, I only reached half of your tenure. 32 years on the Board will forever stand as the longest-serving. To Russ Bakuza, I'm so thankful that you were willing to step up and take the appointment to my dear colleague and friend, Mrs. Cindy Buckley's seat. And finally, Mrs. Connie Rule, who along with Cindy was not only a colleague, but became one of my most cherished friends. Dave, Jim, and Ron, I won't take too much additional time, as I already presented to you, but I want to reiterate what outstanding Board members you each have been. Lastly, I would like to take a moment to set the record straight. Despite what some Board members purported or what you may have read on Facebook, I have never conducted nor participated in meetings outside of Sunshine during my tenure on this Board. As Board President, it was my responsibility to help to ensure that the letter of the law was being followed, and I took this responsibility, along with all of my other duties, very seriously and always acted within the legal limits of the law. There are many other stretches to the truth and/or out-and-out lies that have been circulated in our Bethel Park community, but I'm not going to address those this evening. I would rather stay positive and end on a positive note. Kindness matters. If you take anything away from this presentation, please remember that, and try to find a way to use kindness in our schools and in our community. At this time of Thanksgiving, I want to thank you again, Bethel Park, for 16 years of memories. Continue to fight the good fight, take care, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And now, I would like to turn the microphone over to Dr. Pascarella for some presentations from the Pennsylvania School Boards Association.
It is my pleasure to be able to recognize three members of our school Board this evening for making the Pennsylvania School Boards Association's Honor Roll of School Board Service. Since 1983, PSBA has been recognizing the contributions of dedicated local school directors with long-term service. School directors are first recognized when they reach eight years of service, and again, every four years thereafter, through the Honor Roll of the School Board Service. The Honor Roll is PSBA's way of saying thank you to those individuals who exemplify leadership and statementship, giving unselfishly of their time and talents for the future of our public schools, and putting something back into their local communities through their guidance of the education of our youth. It is my pleasure tonight to recognize Jim Means for his eight years of service to the Board and qualifying for the Honor Roll for the first time. I am also pleased to present Donna Cook with the certificate recognizing her 16 years of service on the Board, as well as Dave Amadis for his 20 years of service. Will the audience please join me in recognizing Mr. Means, Mrs. Cook, and Mr. Amadis? Now, will Mrs. Cook and Mr. Means please join me over by Mr. Amadis for the presentation of the awards? Now, I turn the meeting back over to you, Mrs. Cook.
And we have Mr. Consul Magno to talk about the shared table.
Evening, excuse me. Good evening, Board. Early in the day, I asked Marybeth to pass out the program for a shared table that you asked me to discuss tonight. It gives you all the instructions on how we would formulate one in the school district. Just to give you a little bit of background, our program is an offer program where we offer assorted fruits, vegetables, and everything for the students to select. So the amount of waste is limited, as opposed to a serve program where we put exactly what is offered on the table for those students, and so a lot of waste occurs in that aspect. So when a student comes through one of our cafeteria lines, they can select assorted fruits and vegetables and juices that they like. Is there a limit, is there an amount of waste? Yeah, there's a little, but what a shared table does is combine this stuff. My only concern, or one of my concerns, is making sure that anything that is redistributed to the students is safe as far as temperature goes, and there's also no cross-contamination as if a student would grab something, sneeze on it, and then another student would pick it up. We want to make sure that that is eliminated and no chance of that happening. So just, does anyone have any questions? If we do go forward with this, I would recommend to do it on a pilot basis in one of our elementary schools, and then we can go from there. So there's a minimal amount of equipment that we need to invest in and time. We'd want to coordinate it with the noontime aide and with cafeteria staff so that students that do want to come to this table are safe in doing so for allergies and things like that. Any questions?
I was going to say, I agree. Looks, on the surface, this looks good, and I agree, though, that a pilot program is good because I'm sure there's going to be some growing pains with it, something that's not obvious with this, so that's great. So thank you for doing it.
You're welcome. Yeah.
Would you figure, would you also publicize this before the pilot program started, and how would you go about telling the parents about?
Yes, that'd be the way that we'd go about doing it, Pam. I mean, I've instituted breakfast programs in schools, so we'd roll it out on the same basis in the elementary school, so get the support of the noontime aides and the principal and everything, and pilot it that way, and then move it on to each school, so.
Would you recommend, you don't have to recommend tonight, but would you recommend a particular school? Would you have in mind a particular?
I've got a good relationship with all the principals, so I could entertain that at one of the district staff meetings, but, yeah.
Yeah, the biggest problem I have with a program like this is how do you control these allergy issues, particularly something like peanuts that can send somebody into anaphylactic shock?
Right. Well, right now, we don't serve any peanuts in any of the schools. We're a peanut-free school district, so, but your point of allergies and that, it would have to be, I'd recommend it being close to our cashier so that if a student comes up, we could identify that student, whether it be a Packer or whether it be a regular student. So we do have all that information in our computer for the cafeteria, so we can identify that. The noontime aides could have a hard copy of all the allergies with those students. We can identify them in that way, too, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
And review of innovative mindsets, is that?
Yeah, just before we close on that one, is that something that the Board would like to think about, or is that something that you would like us to pilot?
I think you should pilot it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, who's doing that?
Oh, Beth.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening. Dr. Pascarella, Dr. Janet O'Rourke, Ms. Lori Sutton, and myself are pleased to provide a review of innovative mindset. The innovator's mindset can be defined as the belief that the abilities, intelligence, and talents are developed so that they lead to the creation of new and better ideas. Innovative mindsets expanded upon all learners' grow and our instruction is great by continuing to build student and staff capacity around the PA Core standards, 21st century skills, and appropriate supports for all students while maintaining safe and supportive schools. George Kuros, the writer of The Innovative Mindsets for Education, stated that Carol Dweck wrote about fixed and growth mindsets, stating that in a fixed mindset, students believe their basic abilities, their intelligence, their talents are fixed traits. They have a certain amount, and that's that, and then their goal becomes to look smart all the time and never look dumb. In a growth mindset, students understand that their talents and abilities can be developed through effort, good teaching, and persistence. They don't necessarily think everyone's the same or can be Einstein, but they believe everyone can get smarter if they work at it. Carol Dweck's work found that you can move between a fixed mindset and a growth mindset. According to George Kuros, the innovative mindset takes it one step further. This would actually go one step past the notion of a growth mindset and is looking at what you are creating with all of your learning. It is not simply about being open to growth, but focusing on what new knowledge you can create with that growth. It would always start with the question, what is best for this student? For the 1819 year, we continued to ask, what is best for the student by cultivating a vision based on four pillars surrounding educating the entire child?
I'm sorry.
We hope that this graphic of the vision looks familiar, as we've been building upon this over the past several years. I'm going to go over the lower left-hand corner and the upper left-hand corner, safe and supportive schools, and universal design learning opportunities and supports for all. The change for last year's vision was made that there are now four areas instead of three. Safe and supportive schools was added to reflect the priorities of promoting active Safe and supportive schools was added to reflect the priorities of promoting active student engagement in a safe and positive learning environment. As to the red, and you'll see that they're all color-coded, and we're continuing our color-coding moving forward, which keeps us all visual, the universal design learning opportunities. This area of the vision began with a review of district and building data on least restrictive environment and discussed why reaching for LRE is important to improving student performance. Then in year two, we focused on promoting a growth mindset and presuming competence. Last year, with the innovative mindsets, this set the stage for having a strengths-based learning perspective where classrooms are learner-focused. Examples of this include hock time, co-teaching, and team teaching at the various levels, establishment of the Best Buddies Program, and utilizing our curricular resources to provide all students access to grade level and appropriate content and standards.
The blue pillar of our graphic is reflective teaching practices. In this section, we're asking what is best for students. Principals held individual data meetings with instructors to discuss instructional plans. We formed committees of teachers and administration to review elementary report cards, the fifth-grade ELA, which culminated in four teachers piloting the Wonders ELA program for this year. The hock time committee met in order to change to longer rotations with real-time student work. Families and staff were able to get their schedule earlier due to move-up day with IMS and the high school. To keep our students growing and to help with the financial burdens of college, we added two additional CHS courses, biology and math, that's college and the high school, in order to start the 1920 school year for a total of seven CCAC dual enrollment courses. In order to personalize in-service for our teachers, we held a Teacher Choice Professional Development Day with roughly 30 presentations to choose from during June. The innovative classroom and 21st century skills, the green section of the pie, also focuses on student voice and choice. Students are critical thinkers who are not only problem solvers, but reflective problem finders. They persevere through challenges in their collaborative environment to reach their goals. The Bethel Park School District was a PA SMART grant recipient during the 1819 school year. Mrs. Liberto's second graders participated in a county-wide STEAM activity to kick up the annual Remake Learning Days by switching classrooms with the McKeesport Elementary students. All Bethel Park Elementary Schools offered a family creative learning series last year, including the WQED Ruff-Ruffment and Scratch Junior Programs. Neil Armstrong's students took on weekly STEAM challenges, and there were various scholarships and opportunities for the IMS and high school students, which can be highlighted on the Bethel Park webpage. This slide provides a district versus Pennsylvania State PSSA overview of the scores for the 1819 school year. As you can see in the English Language Arts, the state average was a 60.9, and our Bethel Park average was 83% of our students performing proficient or advanced on the test. Mathematics grades three through eight, the state average was 42.4, and our Bethel Park average was 65%. And in science, 68% for the state and 89% for the district. That test is only given to the fourth and eighth grade students, the science test. This graphic shows the trends of the PSSA reading assessment. And looking at a three-year trend, Bethel Park has remained steady, around 83% to 84% of our students performing proficient and advanced over the last three years, and we have an average of 2% of our students at the below basic level. So we are maintaining very high scores and steady. This is a trend of the last 15-ish years of the PSSA math achievement data. We have been consistent, around 65% of our students scoring proficient or advanced in the Bethel Park School District over the last two years. And then this is a PSSA science achievement trend graph. Again, this test is only given in fourth and eighth grade. And so in science, we have seen a steady climb of students scoring advanced on the PSSA science test over the past three years. This graphic represents the third, I'm sorry, this chart, represents the third-grade ELA scores at the top for each elementary school, and then the mathematics scores for the third grades by elementary school. You can see the state average is in yellow at the bottom of the 2019 column, so 61.9% of the third graders scored proficient or advanced across the state. In ELA, English Language Arts, and the math was 56%. You can see the Bethel Park students scored higher than those state averages in all schools in third grade. The percentile change, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
2018 to 2019 is in the far right column. Anything in blue is greater than a 5% increase. The green is a 0 to 5% change, and then the red is anything that is greater than a 5% decrease. Fourth grade, again, ELA scores are at the top for all of the elementary schools, and the mathematics scores are at the bottom. This year, after looking at the scores, we did, for the 1920 school year, we did work with principals and created building-level SMART goals, which are goals that are specific, measurable, attainable, reliable, and timely, that Mrs. Sutton will be discussing later in the presentation. We did bring in Kiker Math Training this year to work on models of excellence, of student-centered math classroom. Three through 12 teachers were involved in that training. And we are also bringing in Dr. Jerry Thompson. She is a senior associate at the Center for Assessment, which consults with the Pennsylvania Department of Education, to work with our teachers to realign standards and enhance efficiency in our ELA units focusing on reading comprehension, analysis, and writing. This chart shows the middle school scores. Neil Armstrong at the top, ELA fifth and sixth grade, Independence, ELA seventh and eighth grade, then Neil Armstrong math and Independence math scores. The state score, you will notice the average comes first, and then the Bethel Park score, we are above all of the state average scores. According to Mr. Minch and Dr. Spalaris's Digging Deeper into the Data, IMS eighth grade placed eighth in the state for ELA middle schools. So that's great news. Science. It is important to note, two years in a row, William Penn Elementary Schools' fourth graders scored 100% proficient and advanced on the science test. IMS eighth grade, oh, I apologize.
Do you have anything you want to say about mine? I'm sorry.
No.
That was my fault. Okay. And the keystones are given in as ending assessments in our 10th grade English class, Algebra I and Biology. In Literature, which is the 10th grade English class, Bethel Park High School, the percent of proficient students, when they, no matter when the kids take the test, it's banked, and then it is scored in their 11th grade year. So in this particular assessment, 87% of our kids are reaching that proficient or advanced range prior to their or in their 11th grade year. As you can see, the state average was less than that, 71.5% in Literature. In Algebra, Algebra I, students begin to take Algebra I in the Bethel Park School District. There's a group that take it in seventh grade, a group that takes it in eighth grade, and then they can take it anywhere between the ninth, 10th, and 11th grade years, 12th grade years. So in this particular case, those scores get banked, and as you can see, once again, our Bethel Park passing rate is 87%, and the state average is 71.5%. And once again, with the keystones, Biology, the scores are, Bethel Park is at, sorry, Bethel Park is, the percentage of the pass rate is 78.6%, and the state average is 63.2%. As each of these charts show, it also gives the years from 2015 to 2019 and the direction that Bethel Park is going in.
This slide shows the disaggregated data for the IEP subgroup. The graph shows a comparison of 2017, which is represented in the, it does look orange there, yellow-orange on my printout, orange color, to 2018, which is represented in green. And the scores for the district, all grades, and for each grade, then three through eight at the bottom. English Language Arts is on the left-hand side, and math is on the right. The score is the total percentage of students with IEP's Individualized Education Programs who are proficient and advanced on the PSSA. So for English Language Arts, the PSSA data for this IEP subgroup overall increased from 48.8% to 52.1%. For the sixth grade levels, increases were seen in grades three, four, six, and eight. All grades met the 2018 ESSA, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act goal in English Language Arts. For the mathematics, the PSSA data for this subgroup overall increased from 33.9% to 35.7%. For the sixth grade levels, increases were seen in grades three and four. Grades three, four, five, and seven met the 2018 goal of the ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act in mathematics. The next three slides show information and data points from the Pennsylvania Department of Education, Special Education Data Reports, and the Future Ready PA Index District Fast Facts. So here you'll see that the total special education percentage from December 1st of 2018 was 17.1 compared to the state average of 17.3%. We are currently preparing the data for the December 1st, 2019 Child Count Report, so this information is always one year behind in our state. The total gifted percentage from the recent District Fast Facts shows that the district percentage of 5.0% compared to the state average of 3.45%. This slide shows the percentage of special education enrollment by disability category. Some of the categories, that's in the note at the bottom, states that from the Individuals with Disabilities Education Improvement Act, or the IDEA, are not reported due to small group size and confidentiality. For comparison, the district has more students identified than the state in the disability categories of autism and speech or language impairment. The district has less students identified than the state averages in the disability categories of emotional disturbance, intellectual disability, other health impairment, and specific learning disability. Now, these percentages change over time based on the current students and their identified needs for special education programs and services. These data points do not include students with other diagnoses or disabilities who receive accommodations under Section 504, Chapter 15 Service Agreement, and other students may have a diagnosis or disability in our schools, but they may not even need any specially-designed instruction through an IEP or accommodations through a service agreement. These determinations are based on district evaluations and reevaluations and the student team meetings, including parental involvement, following the federal and state regulations. And then this last slide represents an analysis of the district percentages compared to state percentages related to least restrictive environment. The IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, requires students with disabilities to be educated with students without disabilities to the maximum extent appropriate for each student within the full continuum of placement options. So what that means is that while we want to increase our number of students that are in the general education curriculum and classroom 80% or more, that doesn't mean that we're going to eliminate out-of-district placements or the full continuum. That's still going to happen. That's often a frequently asked question when we talk about least restrictive environment. But we do have work to do in that category. So to meet the current state average, 61.5% of our students with IEPs should receive their instruction in general education classrooms for 80% or more of their day. So while we still have not met this percentage, you can see we have increased from 56.3% to 59.5% to 60.7% over the past three school years. So we're closing that gap. Forty, the less than 40% or more are all green, as you'll note, well underneath the state average, and then the other settings, this last year went up a little bit, but it's, would be compared with very small percentages. They often look at a 10% increase or above 10% or below 10% to look at statistical significance, so it's still, though, is not meeting that state percentage.
There are so many innovative and creative things that go on in our schools. I chose three particular events that have happened in our schools during the 2018-19 school year to highlight, although I highly recommend that community members and those in the audience go to the bpsd.org website and look at 21st Century Skills. The lifelong learning skills that are taught through many activities that our students do in their classrooms is something that they'll take forward and to help them to be successful in whatever they choose to do next. The first photo there is from the Lincoln Community Garden that had their garden and created and grew over 600 pounds of fresh vegetables that were distributed and donated to the food pantry with South Hills Interfaith Movement. In the Innovators Club, which is the middle group there, they're making connections to the world of aviation, and this year, they're extending their work to create and go and observe the Pittsburgh Glider Group and how they created gliders and learn about aviation through that. And then the last group are four high school students that won, they were awarded awards in the Research Experience for Teachers Design Team Competition sponsored by Human Engineering Research Laboratories and the Rehabilitation, Science, and Technology Department of the University of Pittsburgh. Each and every day, when you walk through our halls and go into our classrooms, you'll see kids being creative, collaborative, being critical thinkers, and communicating effectively with one another, and the idea that they're developing themselves for whatever they choose to do next. It's very exciting.
Our next steps. Digging deeper for student achievement. For the 1920 school year, we have created building-specific goals around the four pillars. Safe and supportive schools, which reflects the priorities of promoting active family engagement. Universal design learning opportunities for all sets the stage for having a strengths-based learning perspective where classrooms are learner-focused by using evidence-based practices. Reflective teaching practices emphasizing the personal nature of education for students and educators by using data to inform instruction for all. And 21st century skills, which increase student voice and choice to grow critical thinkers who are not only problem solvers, but reflective learners valuing the process.
So within our current theme of digging deeper, each building develops specific SMART goals in each of the four pillar areas, and as Ms. Wells- And as Ms. Wells stated earlier, SMART goals are specific, measurable, attainable, reliable, and timely. For professional development throughout the school year, we will continue to use the color coding to tie back into each of these four areas of the district vision and building-level goals.
We're very excited about some of the professional development that we've been offering during this 1920 school year. On November fourth and fifth, around the different goals and the different pillars that we're working on, teachers and the administrator were able, administrators were able to work on sessions tailored by the principals' specific goals related to our Twenty-First Century Goals. We also had training with our SAM Lab. Keystone Consulting came and did sessions with our teachers on co-teaching and inclusionary practices. Trish Andrews, our solicitor, came and spoke about the different rules and regulations dealing with special education law, and basically how to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the students in an appropriate way. The Allegheny Health Network Concussion Team came and talked about concussions and did an excellent job. Aubrey, who is our partner providing our SAP program and mental health services, one of our partners in providing those services, came and did some sessions on mental health, as well as Dr. Tracy Scanlon, along with various other speakers regarding wellness and mental health that we provided to our staff on those two days. Mrs. Sutton did a yeoman's job of lifting that heavy weight and coordinating those efforts for our teachers that were well-received by everybody involved. We also had the opportunity, as Ms. Wells had said earlier, to provide instruction for our math teachers to increase math engagement and analysis of academic tasks, texts using Kiker Learning that Mr. Ryer was able to coordinate for us at no cost to the district. We also had an opportunity to look at our PVAS reflection and PVAS's growth over time. So, a student and how they're growing and the teacher's instruction over time and how that is, a statistical analysis of that, and helping teachers to adjust some of their instructional practices to best meet the needs of their students. And we also had our math and nine-through-twelve social studies committees met during that time to review their curriculum and make suggestions for ways in which to improve the instruction that we are offering our students in those two particular content areas. It's been our pleasure this evening to present to you our update and our review of the 1819 school year, as well as our plans for the 1920 school year, that we are well off on a positive trend in creating a great learning environment for our students in Bethel Park.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cook, can we make that available publicly, that slide presentation?
Probably. Do we usually put that on the website?
Okay, thank you.
And if anybody has any questions, don't hesitate to contact any of us. We'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Can I make a comment right now? You mentioned the number of courses that we have where students can take it and get college credit. One of the criticisms we've had of our academic program is our students aren't taking the Advanced Placement test. But I stumbled upon a website for the state, and if anybody's interested, they can email me, and I'll get it out to them. But fifty percent of our students wind up being enrolled in a college course. And why would you ever take an Advanced Placement course, test, if you already had college credit for the course? So, that's something that works against us in some of the ratings, because they're looking for people that took the test, but fifty percent of our students have already taken a college-level course through the dual enrollment.
It's one of those things, Mr. Means, I'll be honest with you, it's one of those things that it's a balance. Do we, do we want the kids to take the AP courses and the AP courses that are offered? Some of our AP courses are those college-level courses, and we're providing the opportunity for the kids to get the college level. We offer them the opportunity to take the AP exam, but it's a cost to them, and they have to pay it. So, it's one of those things of what they, what they, what a parent or a child feels the best opportunity is when they finish those.
No, I'm not criticizing. I think the smart thing is to get the college credit for it, take the dual enrollment and get the college credit. That's a safer way than taking the test. It's just that through a lot of the rating systems, it doesn't show up favorable to us.
That's right. There's a lot of things, quite frankly, there's a lot of things that a lot of school districts do, Bethel Park being one of them, that doesn't show in the PSSA scores or the Keystone scores that are definitely ways in which the kids are prepared to do whatever's next in a, in a very valuable way. And I think all schools probably suffer from that, Bethel Park being one of them, of course.
The other thing is, I looked around, and I look at Upper St. Clair, Peter's Township, and Mount Lebanon, and the number of their students that wind up being enrolled in a college-level course in high school is very low, in the low single digits. So, we're way ahead of those schools in that area.
Again, thanks. Before we adopt the agenda, we did receive some requests to put dress code on for discussion item this evening. It has not, it's not recommended to have that on at this time, at this meeting, but rather to hold that for the first of the year, to give it the time that it would need, and perhaps to send it back to, send it to committee for a look at as well. So, you won't see that on the agenda this evening. I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items.
No motion.
Second. Mrs. Roll made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, I'm not down to that yet. We're still at the top. All in favor to adopt the agenda, say aye. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the October 22nd, 2019 regular meeting. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I need to announce executive sessions held November 19th, 2019 for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. I assume that was our staff report for this evening?
No.
No, we're also having a staff report. Oh, my gosh, okay. Staff report of Mrs. Flota.
Thank you. As always, there are plenty good news items about the Bethel Park School District to share with you this evening, and it's my pleasure to be able to do that. Okay. The Bethel Park School District ruled out the red carpet to welcome area veterans and active service members into our schools this Veterans Day to thank them for their service. Each school does something different, but all of them go out of their way to make these heroes feel valued and special. At this time, I would like to highlight a few of the ways we honored our veterans this year. Independence Middle School Student Council and the Students in the Bring a Smile to the Service Group hosted their Seventh Annual Pancakes and Sausage Breakfast in the library, and each year this event gets bigger and better. Almost one hundred veterans and active service members attended, and were not only treated to a delicious pancakes and sausage breakfast cooked and served by the students, but they also enjoyed pastries and desserts, and were entertained with a special patriotic presentation put on by the students. Attendees also had the opportunity to view a giant wall display using the theme "We value, honor, and respect our service members." Franklin Kindergarten students welcomed the veterans and active service members in their lives to their classrooms. The students sang patriotic songs and recited poems, shared information about the veterans in their lives, and personally thanked the attending veterans, enjoyed a snack with the veterans, and made a patriotic craft with them. Franklin third graders in Mrs. Crowley's room got to meet School Director and Navy Combat Veteran Ken Nagel, who shared with them his experiences in the Navy. The students also collected supplies that they will be sending to the sailors on the USS Abraham Lincoln as they set out on their third deployment. Memorial fourth graders met five local veterans who shared their experiences with them. Washington hosted twenty-five veterans for a delicious breakfast before entertaining them with patriotic songs. The veterans each visited a Washington classroom to read the book, The Story of Mr. Rogers and His Neighborhood: You Are My Friend, to the students. William Penn first graders welcomed the members of the South Hills Honor Guard to their school to learn about life in the military and what the Honor Guard does to bring comfort to military families when they have lost their loved ones. These are a few of the examples of how our students are learning about the sacrifices our veterans and active service members have made to keep our country strong and free. For the third consecutive year, Bethel Park employees participated in the National Jeans for Troops fundraiser to benefit the GI Go Fund. This year, one hundred and sixty-three employees donated to the GI Go Fund for the privilege of wearing jeans to school on Veterans Day. This year, we raised one thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars for programs to benefit soldiers when they come back to the States. Over the past three years, Bethel Park employees have donated over forty-seven hundred dollars to the GI Go Fund. We thank Dr. O'Rourke for organizing this event for us. The Bethel Park High School Forensics Team is off to a great start. At the Upper St. Clair Novice Tournament, new team members got to compete against first-time speech and debate students from other schools. Matty Hoffman finished in second place, and Gian Vargis finished in third place. At the Quigley Tournament, veteran debater Caleb Shook finished among the top five students in the congressional debate. Congratulations and good luck to the team this season. Twelve Bethel Park High School students participated in a Model UN activity at the University of Pittsburgh. Model UN is a simulation of United Nations sessions, enabling students to apply prior research and studies in a real-world context, and also practice diplomacy, negotiations, and resolution writing. Bethel Park High School students represented Germany, Northern Macedonia, and Sudan for this activity. Senior Caleb Shook was named a delegate of honorable mention for Sudan. The names of all of the twelve participating students are included on this slide for your review. Bethel Park High School Painting One students used their artistic talents to help local shelter pets get adopted. The students partnered with South Hills Pet Rescue in South Park. Each student painted a portrait of one of the dogs that's up for adoption at the shelter with the hope that not only will the dogs go to a good home soon, but that their new owners will also take their new dog's portrait home with them as well. The students painted twenty-seven portraits, and some of the dogs have already been adopted. The portraits were delivered to the shelter by student Claudia Schreger. Ten Bethel Park High School musicians successfully auditioned and were selected to perform in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's Honors Band Concert. Congratulations to Nick Como, Roma Isel, Braden Lloyd, Becky Mack, Elijah Nice, Jackson Stewart, Teresa Stolpa, Olivia Tabler, Becca Tupper, and Ben Tupper. Our fall sports season recently ended, and we want to take this opportunity to congratulate our teams, athletes, and coaches on great seasons. The girls' cross-country team qualified for the WPIAL playoffs and were led by junior Emily Carter, who finished in third place at the Whipple's and in second place at States. She won four invitational races this year, breaking the course record at two of these meets. The girls' tennis team competed in the WPIAL Team Playoffs. Mia Gorman had a great season, finishing in second place in the Section Singles Tournament, advancing to the WPIAL semifinals and competing at States. In doubles, Jenna Chernicki and Madison Conroy advanced to the Section Doubles semifinals and competed in the Whipple Doubles Tournament. The football team advanced to the Whipple Quarterfinals before bowing out in a close game against Gateway. Six members of our boys' golf team competed in the section qualifiers, with John Harmon advancing to the WPIAL semifinals. And two members of our girls' golf team competed in the section qualifiers. It was a great fall season, and we're anxiously awaiting the start of the winter sports season. Go Hawks! Congratulations to Neil Armstrong Middle School fifth grader Samantha Gross, whose entry into the Pittsburgh Penguins Foundation's Holiday Card Contest was selected as one of ten winners. Her picture of a group of Penguins decorating the Stanley Cup with Christmas lights will be distributed as one of the Foundation's official holiday cards, and will be displayed on the Foundation's and the Pittsburgh Penguins websites and social media platforms. As a winner, Samantha will receive tickets to a Penguins home game and a hundred of her printed cards. Way to go, Samantha, and let's go, Pens! Lincoln Kindergarten students once again hosted a school-wide super socks collection, and this year the students amassed two hundred and fourteen pairs of socks that they donated to the South Hills Interfaith Movement for distribution to those in need as they prepare for the arrival of winter weather. The students did a great job. Memorial fourth grade students in Mrs. Reese's room coordinated a school-wide penny drive to benefit the KDKA Turkey Fund. Thanks to everyone who contributed, seven hundred and fifty dollars was raised for the Turkey Fund, which will provide Thanksgiving dinners to the needy in the area through the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank. If you ever wanted to know what seven hundred and fifty dollars' worth of pennies looks like, check out all those plastic bags that are on the card on the left-hand side of the picture. Bethel Park High School and Independence Middle School string musicians will once again participate in the Electrifier Symphony Concert, which will be held on Friday, November 22nd at 7:00 PM in the Bethel Park High School Auditorium. Former Sleep at the Wheel violinist Hayden Vitera will lead the students, who will be playing classic rock tunes such as Carry On, Wayward Sun, and Stairway to Heaven, on traditional as well as electric stringed instruments. Advanced tickets are five dollars, and tickets purchased the evening of the show will be eight dollars. It's a great evening of music, and we hope you can attend the performance. Almost nine hundred tickets have already been sold for the show. Rock on! You're invited to get into the holiday spirit by attending the free music concerts that will be performed in our schools by our students. The schedule is on the screen before you. All of the shows are free, and we hope you can take advantage of these great evenings of holiday music. We conclude this month's presentation with our monthly reminder of our 2019-2020 vision, which is digging deeper for student achievement. This month, we are sharing the goals for Neil Armstrong Middle School. Each of the school's goals are posted on their respective web pages. And now, if the slide will move, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Student Government.
So, SGA is going to be very active in the month of November, so first tomorrow, several Bethel Park High School students are taking a field trip to Lincoln Elementary School, and we're going to read to, read some holiday Thanksgiving books to a lot of the elementary kids there. That's organized by the Community Service Committee of SGA. And then, something, something else that we're looking into is making military care packages. Laney will elaborate on this. We're trying to give back to students, faculty, military, and community for November. So, we're going to try to make some military care packages, and we have a contact that can give those packages actually right to people being deployed as they walk onto their planes, so we really hope we can do that. We think it could have a really good impact for those people.
So, going off of the care packages, our November goals for SGA is to give back to the students, faculty, military, and community, and just show more appreciation towards them, especially in November. And lastly, we have a meeting tomorrow morning with PACS, SGA, and NHS, and we're just trying to get a joint meeting and to be more productive and work together and be able to go, be able to do bigger and better projects and just be more organized.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Hey, guys, I just hope you, thank you for your involvement, first of all. I hope you continue to stay involved in things like this for the rest of your school career and the rest of your life. It means a lot for everybody to stay involved. Thank you.
PTA, PTO Council.
Hi. Jen Tierney from Memorial. Abraham Lincoln Elementary, they held a shim food drive from November 11th to 15th, which brought in many pounds of food for our neighbors. A teacher dinner was served during conferences; that was very much appreciated. Planning has started for the annual cupcakes with Santa and holiday shop in December. Ben Franklin Elementary, Ben Franklin has had a busy November. They had a post-it dinner for the teachers on November 4th to show their appreciation during conferences. The following day, they had their bake sale during the election. There was such a great turnout that they will be doing again in May. Franklin also joined in with Washington Elementary, collecting Halloween candy for the military. Their big fundraiser, Night Out with Trivia Jockeys, was this past weekend at the community center. It was a fun night out for parents, and we look forward to the Santa shop starting December 4th and the cookies with Santa on December 6th. George Wash- George Washington Elementary, George Washington just wrapped up with the Sarah's Candy and Chestnut Hill fundraisers, which were both very successful, as was the Chipotle Spirit Night on November fifth. The GWPTO Lucky Ladies Bash on November second went extremely well and brought in over four thousand dollars in profit for the PTO. Along with other elementary schools, George Washington participated in a candy drive benefiting Operation True Appreciation, which concluded this week. The school welcomed a group of veterans on Veterans Day for breakfast, as well as a musical tribute from all of the students. Veterans were welcomed into the classroom for discussion and book reading. There were three dress-up days this week, red, white, and blue for Veterans Day, Cardigan Day on eleven thirteen, and Green Day on eleven fifteen for America Recycles Day. The PTO will host the first of the fourth-grade activities on eleven twenty-four with a bowling party at Princess Lanes for all fourth graders. Other plans are currently being made for future fourth-grade activities. The PTO will have their holiday gift shop from December tenth to the thirteenth, and volunteer sign-ups will be posted soon. The holiday sing-along is scheduled for twelve eleven, and Cookies with Santa is scheduled for twelve thirteen. Committees are currently working on those upcoming events. A neon party fundraising event was added to the calendar for February seventh of next year. Memorial Elementary, this year, for enrichment activities, Memorial Elementary PTA continue to fund the annual class field trips, as well as assemblies, talent shows, and art and science expo. This year, the Holiday Festival has been moved to Wednesday evening on the eleventh. Memorial fourth graders are holding a donation drive for South Hills Pet Rescue, starting in the month of December. Participants will take name tags off of the Christmas tree in the lobby and return a donation to benefit South Hills Pet Rescue. The kids just visited South Hills Pet Rescue on Sunday and were able to meet some of the pets that are up for adoption, as well as getting a donation list from that organization. New this year, Memorial also has a gratitude committee, and one of our first events was a candy drive for overflow Halloween candy, and that went to local Meals on Wheels. It was also paired with a "thank you" card kind of poem that the kids were able to decorate with foam stickers, and they were paired up with the treats for Meals on Wheels as well. Odyssey of the Mind is also being held at Memorial this year. We have a primary team, as well as a Division One team, and so far, things are going really well. And the purpose of the Odyssey of the Mind is to be able to let kids know that you can teach creativity. So, we take a different approach to solving problems, including steam, as well as incorporating art, along with creating costumes for a skit and using steam projects in order to make the skits happen, so they combine both. Independence Middle, or no, yes, okay. Independence Middle School, IMS Veterans Day breakfast on November eighth was a success. Jennifer Mackey worked along with the student council on the breakfast. Student council worked hard and did a great job decorating the entrance of IMS and Library of IMS with balloons and posters. The veterans enjoyed the breakfast, and the IMS craft show is almost here. The show is on Saturday, November thirtieth, at the IMS Cafeteria. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Solicitors' report? Any committee reports?
Just want to let you know that SHAST is going to have their legislative night this Thursday at five o'clock, and also coming up from the AIU, there will be a new school board workshop toward the end of January. They'll be giving us that information in January. And the other thing is that Steel Center tomorrow will be hosting teachers, and it's kind of a new, exciting venture for us. We've got a grant in which we will be able to have teachers come in and provide the substitutes for their classrooms, that they're able to take advantage of this. And there'll be a few sessions over time that they will get to actually see what these students learn. At Steel Center, they actually watch demonstrations, take field trips, see how they apply STEM right in their classroom, so it's kind of going to be an exciting adventure for Steel Center. They are trying to do more and more to get our students out in the field and to get teachers, particularly at the seventh-grade level, to start them younger, so they get more acquainted with what the trades have to offer and some of the new programs that we'll be having. Also, just want to say that Steel Center hosted a dinner for the veterans last week, and it was successful. The veterans enjoyed it, and they just have a great culinary section, so I hope that the teachers really get to enjoy that. Also, the last thing is that they are planning to have a trip to the Carpenters Union, and they will be offering other sessions for credits for the teachers, and that'll be good.
Thanks. Anybody else have any committee reports? Any public comments on agenda items?
Kim Turner, 322 Kennebec Road, I'm actually representing the Bethel Park Slow Pitch Association. We need to have you not vote on the acceptance of the donation. We've run into some glitches. They want twenty-five dollars a month for insurance, so if the Slow Pitch Association booster said if we were going to have to pay twenty-five dollars a month, we wanted to keep that ownership because we were signing the contract unless the school board decides that you are going to sign the contract and pay the three hundred dollars a year.
Okay, I think we lost Mr. Christiansen. We tried to redial. I don't know.
Try one more time.
One more time, yeah.
My phone got disconnected. Thank you for calling back.
All right, we just want to make sure you were still on there. We thought we lost you. All right, we're moving in then to business items. As this is a combined meeting, what we'll do is have a discussion on the item as a committee meeting discussion, and then I'll turn it over to the chairperson to move the items if so deemed. So, we're on Curriculum Committee to begin with. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns about items one and two under Curriculum Seeing none, then I will turn that over to Mr. Spicuzza.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Seeing two items tonight under Curriculum Committee. Would anyone like any of them held out separately? Hearing none, I'm going to move the following two items. Item number one, school-sponsored overnight educational activities. Under A, it's a change to the PMEA All-State Conference and Festival, Calhari Resort, Pocono Manor, PA, April twenty-second through twenty-fifth, 2020. Item B is the PAFCC LA State Leadership Conference at the Penn Stater Conference Center Hotel and State College, Pennsylvania, from March thirtieth through April first, 2020. And item two is an independent study.
Second.
Items one and two under Curriculum Committee have been moved by Mr. Spicuzza and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Those items carry nine to zero. Personnel Committee is next. And there are... Eight items. Anyone have any questions on any of these items? And I will move it over to Mrs. Rule for Personnel Committee.
There are eight items under Personnel. Are there any that anyone would like to have held out? If not, I move that, one, the approval of extra-duty responsibility program for 2019-20, acceptance of resignation, appointment of personnel, memorandum of understanding with the Bethel Park School District Transportation Department, memorandum of agreement with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers, appointment of personnel, 2019-20 Alternative Education Program, seventh amendment to the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers, CBA, approval of substitutes.
Second.
Items one through eight under Personnel have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Those items carry nine to zero. We have one item under Facilities and Services Committee. I'll just turn that over to Mr. Workmeister and as we'll move it.
Okay. Mrs. Cook, there's only one item under Facilities and Services. Like you said, it's installation and monitoring of the fire alarm system at the bus garage. Would any, are there any discussions? No, so I guess...
I need a second on that one. Item one under Facilities and Services has been moved by Mr. Workmeister and seconded by Mrs. Rule. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? That item carries nine to zero. We have a discussion-only item of repair rewinding of the water line at the stadium.
So, and I'll let Mr. Keith or Mr. Karazi jump in at any point, but the general synopsis of this is that for some time now, even since the stadium field has now become turf for quite some time, there is a pipe that runs, a water line that runs underneath the field to the other side, creating water for the restrooms and concession stands on the visiting side. So, we have started to see a very minor leak, but a small leak on the one side that's going to need to be repaired. So, our choices are twofold. I'll share the one that I would like to recommend, although it may be a little more expensive. I think it's, after much discussion, a recommendation from our team that we think is valuable. And that is, instead of fixing the pipe where it is underneath the field, right now, the leak is just on an edge.
It's on a track.
Track edge, right, the edge of it. But our fear is that it will continue to deteriorate to the point that some point, it may actually leak in the field. So, my recommendation, and as our team, would be to go out and get some bids and quotes to actually run the water line out and around, all the way around the track over to the other side. This way, if we ever, hopefully, we wouldn't have leaks in the future, but if we did, they wouldn't be underneath the field or the track. This is particularly important as we're making decisions. In the near future, we'll be having discussions about the track itself, resurfacing the track and those types of things. But at any rate, that is our recommendation. The other option, obviously, much less expensive, would be to just fix the leak where it is and then replace that section of the track that would need to be replaced. So, that would be up to discussion, and that's why we're bringing both options and sharing our recommendation. We'll field some questions that you may or may not have, and would look for, not official approval, but at least, you know, some type of approval to move forward and getting some pricing.
So, would that money to pay for this, to reroute the pipe, would that come out of capital reserves, or is that budgeted?
We didn't. No, we didn't.
How many years left on the field? Is there...
On the turf, you mean?
The turf, yeah.
I think they just replaced that when I got here in sixteen.
Sixteen, right, so we got a lot of years, is what I thought.
We do. And I do think if, you know, we are going to be having a discussion in the near future about the track as to what we want to do as far as resurfacing that. So, I just think it's a wise move to get that out and run it around.
Have we gotten any preliminary experts to come in and take a look at this?
Well, just our own gentlemen, and that's what typically works with us through the district, and I believe that was their recommendation as well.
Yes, to reroute it.
An outside, an outside...
Excavator and one of our plumbing contractors, yes.
Oh, okay, that's what I was wondering, and that's what they recommended?
Yes.
And until the field gets resurfaced, we could just abandon the existing pipe?
Yeah, we shut it off already. We shut the whole stadium down seasonal, so the stadium's shut down right now.
But what I'm saying is, we won't have to do any digging in the field.
We won't have to do any digging in the field, but it is underneath the track, and if we elect to, if we reroute it, we would never have to touch the track. But we would like to make sure the track's solid, because obviously, as you know, water wears and tears against the earth. Make sure there's no void there. But we are having to have the track being tested right now, too, for a possible upgrade on the track.
I think his question mainly was, if we reroute it, we could just leave the old pipe underneath it without having to dig it up.
But, like I said, Doc, we want to make sure that the track itself, where it's leaking right now, is solid underneath, so we don't have any collapsing.
Correct.
Is this an issue, is this a situation where we're going to get three bids, or are we going to go with the company we talked?
Most likely, you have to advertise.
Okay.
Well, the worst possible scenario is to let that thing go and then have some big catastrophe when there's a big game or meet or something like that. So, I guess we're just looking really for, to make sure that that is, because if not, I mean, if it's just the fix that we're talking about, it would have to be approved by the board, but it wouldn't be sealed bids at that cost. But I think we're going to have to go out for bids, so before we went forward with that, we wanted to make sure, you know, we were all board with that. Okay?
I think we want to, you know, go out for bids to get the pricing anyway, just see what...
Doesn't force anything to get bid.
That makes sense.
Mr. Keith, is this something we can write in-house? I mean, the...
No, as far as running the line itself around the track.
No, the request to write the RFQ or whatever.
I think we could, yes. I think all three of us could, yes.
All right, moving on to Finance Committee. Yeah, I've got nine taken off. Now, I'll take that off, sure.
But go ahead, right?
Do we have to take number nine off?
Yep.
And how do we do that?
Well, this would be my statement.
It's not on, per se. We adopted the agenda, but it's a committee agenda first before we go to the voting agenda. That's why we combined the meetings. It's run a little differently.
So, you can discuss it at the committee portion, and then if that's what you decide to take it off, or whatever, the pastor also says it's a comment, then you just don't make that motion at the, when you're actually...
When I pass it off to Mr. Ammott. Then you wouldn't move that item.
So, obviously, you know, this is a typical procedure that we do do. We take, you know, different, whether it be donated storage unit, soccer nets, et cetera, in. So, as far as that goes, what I would say right now, because what was brought to my attention, is that at the given point, there's nowhere for the pod to go, because the company by which where they were storing is closed down. So, what I would suggest at this given point, just to try to get some more information, both from our insurance company through Mr. Karazi and our solicitor, Ms. Andrews, would be, you know, table it with the idea that we would, if it's possible, leave it on the property at this given point till our December meeting, but then get the information, you know, from the group and share that, because it seems to me like many of the things that we donate, we have donated to us, are covered underneath our insurance or included in our insurance, but I don't want to make any assumptions. I'd like to get clarification on that. I mean, that's...
So, is it already, you know, on our property?
Well, it is, because what happened, unfortunately, the way it was, you know, told to me, was that the company where the pod was sitting went out of business, so the idea was, there's, as of October thirty-first. So, it was a decision that had to be made, and these are our students' belongings, are our district's belongings, in one way or another. We want to be supportive of them and have a place for them. So, we did have it moved on to the district property with the idea, as everything, they would donate that to... would donate that to us, and then that becomes both our responsibility to fix and ensure if something goes wrong, but also, it is ours then, at that given point, which has always kind of been the advice we've been given in what we've done. So, I guess, I don't have all the information. I think it would be best that, at this given point, we gain that additional information that we heard about here today, and then we review that with our insurance carrier and our solicitor to see if there's a way that we might be able to work that out so that it would be covered. I don't know, Mr. Karazzy, if you have any other thoughts on that?
We'll call insurance.
So, but I would say that, I mean, there's nothing really to vote on, but I think, Ms. Andrews, are we okay to allow it to stay on here until we make?
I would assume that if it's on our property, it is covered under our insurance.
It is. I don't think it's worth enough to even hit the deductive.
Right, right, right. So, yeah, I think we're fine to, you know, to not vote on it and wait until the.
Just to clarify, but, I mean, I think it should be covered. And that, I'm hoping that the answer is, is that it is covered underneath our insurance with very little increase at all to what we pay, instead of having to pay the amount that was discussed, if that makes sense. But I don't know that. So, I think before you vote, you should have that information, in which case, I think we need to make the necessary phone calls. Does that seem fair? And you?
I agree.
I agree.
I don't feel comfortable, myself, on number five, adopting the, for me, so I just want to make sure, if we move this forward, that there are at least five board members who will be voting in the affirmative on the adoption of the 2020-2021 proposed.
Mrs. Cook, I think that would be appropriately left to the new incoming board.
Well, I think there's enough board members here and with Mr. Christiansen that would be incoming board, if they so choose to move this item tonight, or it can be left for the December meeting.
So, I do have a few questions about the preliminary budget, but overall, I think that all of the incoming board members should have a say and have a chance to ask their questions also. I could either ask some of my questions tonight, or we could hold off until next month, when all of the incoming board members have a chance to review it.
I thought there was a specific reason why we put it on this agenda for this month.
So, as a reminder, as you've typically done at Bethel Park, you approve this budget as a work in progress, where buzzy then, Mr. Karaz, excuse me, files for exceptions, which we may or may not get. But we've always done it that way. By no means is that saying that you're going to, A, get all those exceptions, that's number one. B, take them if you don't choose to. C, go to the index or raise taxes at all, or, you're not making any of those decisions. What this is allowing you to do by doing this, and it's gotten pushed up due, I believe, the election and the state timelines, is that if we don't do it now, you know, it may be, we may be pressed up against that in December. I recommended that you do this, because it is what we've typically done, and by, as we all know, by this point, we've had many, many drafts of a budget. So, I don't think by approving this in any way, your, this would be the final budget.
No, but I think in the past, the board wasn't changing over when we approved this. I'm just saying, myself personally, I don't feel that I should be involved in a vote on a proposed budget on something that I'm not going to be working with. That's just my personal, I'm just speaking myself personally.
If I may ask a couple of questions, just for clarification, the timeline on a budget to apply for the exemptions. That makes January 8th, I believe?
It's January 9th, but that's not even, that's when we have to have the proposed preliminary budget done, by January 9th. The exceptions really don't have anything to do with that, but we do create a budget so that we can apply for exceptions.
Right.
We don't normally get approved for them, and we don't qualify for them, but I don't want to just say, we're not going to do it, so we do it.
So, the budget, the proposed preliminary budget has to be approved and submitted by January?
Not submitted. We have to have it out for public inspection by January 9th.
And what, and we need that done before we could apply, before we're able to apply for any exceptions?
Well, we got, PDE says you should, you should get your proposed preliminary budget approved by this board. There's people that say you don't have to, because there's really nothing in the law that says that we have to have it approved, but they recommend we do, so that's what we do. The proposed budget, the preliminary budget will be passed at the January meeting, at the regular meeting. So, that proposed budget has to be on display for at least 20 days. So, we have to have it out there by January 9th.
I have a follow-up question, sorry. Just want to make sure I'm clear. I thought it was that, at any point when you did not want to do that, you'd have to pass, you'd have to pass a motion that you weren't going to go above the index then.
We could do a resolution, then we'd go just on the old, where we have to do the preliminary budget in May and pass the regular.
I understand you're saying there's nothing in the law states that you have to, although it's strongly encouraged, but isn't there something that would state you would have to pass a resolution to not go above the index?
You can, we, you can either do the proposed preliminary budget, or you could do the resolution.
You would have to.
The resolution does have to be passed.
Right.
So, nothing in the proposed preliminary budget is binding?
Oh, absolutely.
Correct.
It's our exercise every year.
Is it not exactly the same process as we had last year? When we were.
Yeah, but we did it in January last year, because we had time.
Right.
The date has been pushed back.
Right. It's a date pushed back, but that's it, but same process. You know, the preliminary budget for everybody's information will be extremely high. You know, you're covering pretty much usually the bases and that, that's what I've always seen, and you, there's ways of, you know, you work on it and it comes back down to some.
We wouldn't even know.
We have no idea.
We wouldn't have any idea what some of it's going to be.
Right, but you have to get it in by the law part of it.
By the law.
And that's the main thing, to get it in by, like, next month at the latest. We could do it either now or next month, and like Mrs. Cook saying, she's not comfortable with doing it, because there's a new board.
No, that's just me personally. I'm saying, we should have five members who would be willing to tonight vote on it. I just am saying myself, I am pulling myself out of the.
And we heard one that says they would like to, you know, we could wait till next month, we would like to see the board doing it, too.
Ron.
This isn't an extremely long thing. I mean, if you only have one item, they could do that at the December 3rd meeting. We've taken votes on things at the December 3rd meeting.
Right. Exactly.
So, is there a, is there a date that we have to meet to apply for the exception?
We have to do the proposed preliminary budget, it has to be 20 days before our voting meeting, but the latest it can be is January 9th.
Okay, so.
To apply for the exception.
To pass the proposed, to pass the preliminary budget.
Right.
This thing here.
I understand that. I'm asking about the, I'm asking about.
There isn't a, there isn't a regulation for applying for the exceptions. It's just, if you're not going to apply for the exceptions, you can do a resolution saying you're not going to go to the Act One Index and/or apply for those by the resolution that has to be done by a certain date, but not.
We'd like to do it this way, though.
Is there a deadline if we want to exceed Act One Index to put that on a, or on the referendum?
The referendum's something that I'll have to look into. I'm sure, I know there's a deadline, because they have to get it to Allegheny County, they have to put it on our ballot.
Right.
So, I don't know what those deadlines are, but we're, I'm sure it's probably going to be sometime in March or April.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know the deadline, but, yeah, you have to do it in time to be able to get it.
So, my only, my only concern is, looking at the proposed preliminary budget, it actually isn't that far off from where we were in our final budget last year, and the millage rate that's proposed in the proposed preliminary budget four exceeds the Act One Index, so I want to make sure.
Well, we have to, if we don't exceed the Act One Index, we can't apply for exceptions. So, we have to exceed the Act One Index.
It's just like we did years past.
Actually, last year's.
Yeah, it exceeded.
Last year's was exceeded.
Yeah, it exceeds, yeah.
I, I just went back on last year's, I thought it was right at the.
No, because we couldn't apply for exceptions if we, if we didn't go above the index. So, the preliminary, the proposed preliminary budget went above the index.
Not the final.
I'd be willing to wait until next month after the board's sworn in.
Hey, I remember I was trying to hear it, everybody, the phone isn't that close, but is this something that we can vote on in next meeting and either make the third or the tenth of voting meeting?
Correct. That's what we're discussing.
Okay, thank you. All I can hear is you on it or Dr. P, otherwise everything, I can't really hear anything else.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, we were, we were discussing whether or not there were five people to pass it tonight, or do we want to let it go to the new board, and it could be done at the reorganization meeting and/or if you decide to hold a December voting meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So, another quick question I have, as far as sharing this information with the prospective incoming, the board member-elect, so that they're prepared, would the administration be able to share that with them? I know they're not sworn in or set up.
Probably December 3rd, we could do that, right? I don't know.
You could do, you could do it before, it's not, it's public information.
Okay, so, then what is the pleasure to withhold this as well and put this on for the December 3rd?
Yep.
Just meeting? Okay. So, then when, Mr. Ammitz, when I pass this off to you, number five and number nine are not going to be moved. And does anybody have any other questions about the other items under Finance before I pass it off to Mr. Ammitz?
I do. Number four, budget transfers. Number four under budget transfers shows $17,500 in budget transfers for building services. Is that being transferred from capital reserves, or where's, I wasn't clear on where that was being transferred.
That's transferred, that's all Bill's budget. It's transferred from Bill's budget to Bill's budget. He's just cleaning up negative balances, that's what we do all the time. That's what 90% of these are.
I'm trying to get a handle.
Most of the time, budget transfers are within, it could be in a building that's going from.
Right.
One fund to another and just cleaning it up. It's not transferring from general categories.
We can't transfer it from the capital reserve to the general fund with a budget transfer. That would require a motion, a regular motion.
Okay, Mr. Ammitz, I'll turn the Finance Committee over to you to make the motion.
All right. So, we're now going to have eight items on the agenda. Would anybody want any of those held out for further discussion? Hearing none, I move eight items. Number one being the 2019, November 2019 salaries and bills. Number two being the bill list for December 2019. Number three being the October 2019 financial report. Number four being budgetary transfers. Number five will now be audit services. Number six will be approval to participate in the Western Pennsylvania Electricity Consortium Extension. Number seven will be emergency monitoring system support. And number eight will be the approval of student service contracts. Second.
Second, Mr. Means. Thank you. Okay, so we have items one through four, and then renumbered five through seven and eight, moved by Mr. Ammitz and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
I was wondering if someone could talk about the emergency monitoring system support, just informationally, as to what that is all about?
In general, well. I know what it is, I'm just trying to think. It's a safety, well, no, that's not the, it is a safety item. I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. We have installed additional safety items in our district buildings, and this safety item then would be utilized by approving this. Instead of the company only dialing cell phones, it will now, the safety item would now also include a monitoring system that would also speak with police. Because it's a safety item, I'd rather just.
Probably not, shouldn't put anything else there, I think, because it's under safety.
In general, it gives you a pretty good description in there, but rather than saying exactly where everything is located, at least, the general idea is this is a safety item, and by doing this, the one-time fee sets it up so that it would be able to, instead of it just dialing cellphone numbers, it would actually go to a monitoring company that would then inform the police. After the one-year payment, which is the first year, that number includes both the monitoring and the setup. Then for years future, it would be $65 a month only for the monitoring.
I'm assuming that this is a recommendation from either our safety director or the RSROs or the police department?
I believe it came out of, yeah, out of a series of recommendations from many people throughout the district.
Okay.
Dr. P, this is actually cleaning up the mess that happened in August, isn't it? Where the police were changing their system over and couldn't provide certain support?
I would say it's in addition to that, but related, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Anything else? All in favor of these items, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Those items carry nine to zero. Policy Committee, I'll just turn that over to you, Mr. Means.
Okay. We have three items under Policy Committee. Item number one is policy revisions. These will be the third and final reading.
So, we will be moving those?
We will be moving those, right. And that is number 705, Facilities and Workspace Safety. 709, Building Security. Item number two, this is just an announcement, approval of policy, first of three readings. Number 805.2, School Security Personnel, and this is scheduled for a vote on January 28th, the 2020 meeting. Item number three is a policy revision. Again, this is a first of three readings, that is 805, Emergency Preparedness and Response, and that is scheduled to be voted upon on the January 2020 meeting. Okay. Would anybody like either of those, those two policies under number one withheld? Then I move item number one, the policy revision, third and final reading.
Second.
Item one under Policy Committee has been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mr. Workmeister. Any questions or comments of this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries nine to zero. Mrs. Rule, will you take other for me this evening?
Other? There's only one under other, and that would be settlement and release agreements.
Item one under other has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. All in favor of this item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries nine to zero. We are now to the point of public comments on anything you wish to address the board on. You have two minutes at the microphone.
My name is Gus Oakley, 329 Allendale Drive. I want to thank the board members who will be leaving the board tonight for their service. I do know the amount of time and effort that you have put in, because I did the same thing. For you, Mrs. Cook, I don't understand how you could do 10 years. I did two, and that was way too many. I also want to thank you for building a new high school. You had to do, go through a lot to get it done. Field of Hough and the unholy six didn't make it that time. I came here a few years ago, when a board member, Jim Means, called out another board member, Pam Dobus. I told him them not to run, but he decided to run. I told him if he ran, people would remember. 2,200 people more remembered his comment, and I still have not heard an apology for his comment. apology for his comment. Thank you.
Brenda Paisor, thirty-two twenty-four, Arapahoe Road. I also want to thank the outgoing board members. I've known some of you for many, many years, and I'm proud to call some of you my dearest friends. And it's a loss to our community, but it's been great progress that you have given to this community over the years, and I thank you for all that you have done. I started coming to board meetings. My first board meeting was when my daughter was in kindergarten, and the subject, well, one of the subjects was they were discussing outsourcing of the bus drivers. A topic that has come up pretty much every time the bus driver's contract comes up, I think. It has come up many times and has not changed. And there was a board member who has been hopefully long forgotten, who sat in front of me and rolled her eyes at me when I spoke. Like I said, she's gone, and she's been replaced by much better people who are willing to do what is best for our kids and our community, and I thank you. Enjoy your free time.
Anyone else? Then, do I have any board members? I know Mr. Workmeister has a speech, so does anybody else have anything that they?
Yeah, I'd like to say all the things that are being done by our students, our staff in this district are wonderful. It was really an honor to get to participate in the Veterans Day events, and I know for myself and many of the people I speak to, veterans in the community, at the American Legion, the Honor Guard, everybody's very proud of the way our school district and our community treats their veterans, and I stand with them. I would also like to say thank you to all of the outgoing board members, whether we agree or disagree, our differences aside, I know it's a large sacrifice, it's hard to really appreciate until you're in those seats, and I just want to thank you guys all for the service that you've rendered the community over the years.
Ms. Cook? I made a couple of comments earlier, but I just have just a couple more things. Obviously, it's been twenty years, it's been a long time. I go, and I will be able to sleep well at night with the belief that I have served the community well. I think we are on strong financial footing, strong educational footing, and this community, even though there has been disagreements, is still strong. There has been comments throughout, and I have been one to maintain, that the community is strong because we have people that are always willing to volunteer. It's evident that there's, through all the presentations we have seen, that our community is involved, and it continues to be that way. So I want to continue that way. With that said, good luck to the incoming board members, and do well. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Workmeister?
Okay. I would like to start my closing statement to congratulate everyone involved in producing the play. Fireworks on the fourth, we saw that a few weeks ago, it was great. I also want to congratulate all the students for all the forensic and the band, the sports teams. I mean, as we all heard, I don't want to go into labor because we've, you know, listened to a lot of successes. But all through every meeting, I've seen nothing but great successes from Bethel Park to students, the, you know, faculty teachers, the administration, and it just goes on and on. So I'm very happy to be part of Bethel Park here. And I also want to thank the board members that, you know, I had it written in my speech, but I hate to repeat what was just said, but for all your years of service, you know, Jim with the eight years, Donna with sixteen, and Connie with twenty-two, which you did get recognized, but you have twenty, I think twenty-two years is what you were saying before, or how many is it? Twenty, how many years?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two? Yeah, okay, twenty-two. And then Cindy, of course, while she's not here, but all her years of service, and, you know, and I don't know how many Russ has, but you're going up, and everybody else here. But it just, it goes on and on. So everybody on the board has a lot of years of service, and I'm happy to be here, and I learnt a lot. I want to also say a big thank you to all the great citizens who voted for me four years ago, and to all you that have supported me along the way on this exciting journey. I know that I have always tried hard to never forget the most important goal was to make Bethel Park School District a great one, that everybody wants to live in, and where our students are safe, and succeed to no bounds, and to be fair to everyone. I also thank the current board for educating me on the many facets of what's gone into this great school district. The wisdom I've gained has helped me to contribute in a nonpartisan fashion that has allowed our school district to achieve the impressive number of awards, championships, growth, security, successes, and all, and setting the path for the great citizens of the future. I mean, we've got people here, like the student, the student government, they're doing great things for the vets. I was at the vet luncheon a few weeks ago with Russ, Connie, and the students came there to help the vets out. I mean, they took time away from their day, and I was impressed to see that there at the community center. So this is great, just because you guys are the future, you know. Make sure you get that across to your fellow students. I mean, you're the leaders right now, but we want more leaders to come up too, so tell them, you know, you're the future of America, so keep it up. And I also want to especially thank too our excellent administration that have done so much for the administrative work creating our budgets, running all of our operations, setting the path for our curriculum, that has helped us to excel, protecting all of our students while they are in our control. And thank you, Dr. Pescarella, Mr. Crazie, Mrs. Sutton, Mrs. Wells, Mr. Keith, and all the others now. I mean, we saw here Bethel Park's success here. We're, I just wrote down a few things I just learnt today, and, you know, we're eighth in the state, you know, for IMS. I mean, that is a big feat there, I think. And then our scores, I don't want to regurgitate everything, but you saw for your own eyes that we're, like it was said, quote unquote from Mrs. Wells, that our report shows that we have very high scores, and we have seen a steady decline of our elementary schools over the past three years. So this is contrary to, like was stated earlier, about the fake news that we've heard over the course of, you know, the past few months about how, you know, our academics is in a free fall and everything else. I mean, it's sort of pathetic, but nonetheless, this is politics, and I, you know, accept it. So I just want people to understand that our district is doing exceptionally well. When I was at the community day, listening to people come there, two different years, we'd had people come and say they moved to Bethel Park because of our school district, you know, and they really love it, you know, so, you know, as far as what they were expecting to get out of it, because they heard nothing but good. Also, what I'd like to go and say here is, the, one thing that was interesting is when I started on the board, we were immediately given the critical task of making sure that there was no teacher strike, because we were dealing with a brand-new teacher contract that was past due, and also, at the same time, we had to hire a new superintendent. So the promise of only two meetings a month ended up being six meetings a month, and that went on for about four months at least, you know. So we were quite busy trying to take care of that, and along with other contracts and a lot of other things, as you know, comes up on a monthly basis. So for me, it was a big eye-opener, and I was thrown in the fire, as you could say. But I can say that we had great success, thanks to, like I said, to Dr. Pescarella and the board and others that were involved, to make sure that we did not have a teacher strike, which is funny, because when we had somebody complain about, well, we had a school day canceled because of, it was, you know, ten below zero, twenty below zero, wind chill, whatever, but yet nobody was all excited about the fact that we didn't have to be on strike for weeks. And Bethel Park had that as a nemesis. We were rated as one of the worst school districts for strikes in the state. So just keep that in mind. So we, I was quite happy to be on the board for helping through all this here, too. And I want to go and say that, a couple of numbers just to give you, because it's important to know that, and you might have heard this before, but just to make sure if you didn't know it, Bethel Park had a four-point-two million dollar surplus in two thousand eighteen, a three-point-four million dollar surplus this year in two thousand nineteen. Bethel Park has ten more students in Upper St. Clair and five less than Peters Township. These are based on the Pennsylvania D O E public enrollment in two thousand eighteen, nineteen. But yet we had fifty, we have fifty-five more teachers in Upper St. Clair and fifty-five, well, at the time here, this was, more than Peters Township, this was, you know, like last year now. So these numbers show, you know, that we are on the right track of what we've been doing. We have a good district, financially, fiscally responsible. We have many people thanking us for being concerned for everybody, not just one little group. Because we're a community, this is, that's what I, when I signed up to be on the board, I know that we have to look for taxpayers and the school, the students, and that's what we do. We balance it all out, and I think we have a lot of success here, so I'm quite happy with that. But I do want to go and wish the, I do want to wish the new board well, and to ask that you never forget that you are serving the entire community and not just a select group. We must continue to keep the students' achievements a priority, but to never forget that it must be done fiscally responsibly and to be part of the equation, doing it fiscally responsibly and part of the equation of doing what is best for the children does not include bankrupting the citizens. So being on this board for four years, I can probably say that I've done that, and thank you all, the citizens, for the appreciation you have shown me, and I want to thank you and say happy Thanksgiving, and that's it.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I want to thank Mr. Minch for sending a seventh grader staff to work with the chambers luncheon. He had almost a hundred people there, and Russ and Ron came to help out. We had a panel from, there's Representative Mahalik and Senator Ayavino and Lawrence Christian from the Burr, they're all veterans, and they had a panel, and it went very well, and the kids were excited. We're hoping to be able to use that little clip on Career Day for our students, because they did have some interesting things to say. Also, I want to thank Beth and Dr. Pescarella for having eight teachers go to that career experience for our teachers for the seventh grade. So that'll be exciting, I'm anxious to hear how that goes. And I want to tell Mr. Keith, enjoy your retirement, we'll be thinking about you, and all of you have a nice Thanksgiving.
I will be brief. The wonderful reports we heard tonight, it just continues to amaze me, all the good things that we do, and thank you for everyone that contributed to that. Mr. Keith, what would have happened if we didn't accept your resignation? Just kidding, I wouldn't do that. And just thank you to the outgoing board members, I've had the opportunity to work with you in the past, and I know that we spend a lot of long days and nights and days and nights, and come in on a Tuesday and leave on a Wednesday, things like that, and, you know, thank you for what you've done for the community, and enjoy your time, and happy Thanksgiving.
Reading at that library, right.
Yeah. I would like to thank the citizens of Bethel Park for allowing me to serve as the school director and the Bethel Park School Board for the last eight years, and I mean that very sincerely. I've had the opportunity to work with a dozen other directors and consider most of them to be friends and not merely colleagues. I would be amiss not to single out Cindy Buckley at this point. Cindy had as any sense of humor, was a tireless advocate for children. Though she had a tender heart, she had a steadfast determination of a bulldog. As her body failed her, I was awed by the determination and strength she displayed in the pursuit of what she deemed right. I miss her. I came to the board with the belief that we could have a quality education at a reasonable cost, but initially, the pursuit of these goals seemed somewhat elusive. As I was sworn onto the board, the school district had just gone through two major changes. A new superintendent had just taken charge of the district. Additionally, we had just moved into a new school building and replaced the structure of a principal for each class with a head principal and assistants to aid him. During that period of time, the statewide scores at the high school began to decline. However, the decline in test scores in the high school was reversed in two thousand sixteen with the hiring of Dr. Joe Pascarella. Owing to his strong academic leadership, Bethel Park's test scores at the high school, as well as the rest of the school district, have been improving yearly. During my first five years in the board, we raised taxes either to the act one maximum or close to the act one maximum. Budgets were tight. At one point, Mr. Crazie even said we might have trouble making payroll in a few years. During that time, the board noted we had a declining student population, and it seemed we should have been able to reduce costs by adjusting our faculty to a level commensurate with our student population. Yet as teachers retired every year, our last superintendent insisted that most of them needed to be replaced. The budget crunch continued, and something had to give. There was a breakthrough in two thousand sixteen. At one meeting, Barry Christensen came with data from the Pennsylvania Department of Education that showed we were significantly overstaffed compared with other leading school districts. Shortly after this revelation, we hired Dr. Pascarella and a plan was hatched. With the consent of the school board, we decided to reduce our faculty to a level appropriate for our smaller student population. Three and a half years later, we are running multimillion-dollar surpluses in our budget. This is in large part due to our efforts to right-size the faculty. Contrary to the carking of a vocal minority of citizens, things are well in the district. We are financially sound, test scores are rising, and as a side effect, housing prices in Bethel are rising rapidly. We're still overstaffed, but remedying that situation is a long-term effort. There's still room for improvement, both in the academic and financial fronts, but the good news is we've been improving yearly since the arrival of Dr. Pascarella. Soon, a vastly different board will take control. I hope they are wise enough to continue to adjust our faculty to an appropriate size. Bethel Park is doing well, and hopefully, the new board will continue with the progress already taking place. Lastly, I'd like to thank the staff. The staff has really been outstanding, but I'd like to mention three people in particular I think deserve some special recognition. One is Ron Rahn. Ron runs our IT, he's our head IT guy, and he keeps this whole system working with multiple schools spread out over many square miles. I don't know how many of you realize how difficult a task that is, but he's done an excellent job doing it, and we've had almost no downtime, and Ron deserves special recognition for that. Second, Mr. Keith. Mr. Keith, you've been a stalwart person in maintaining the district, and the district is going to miss you when you retire. You've done an outstanding job at maintaining our facilities, and I certainly appreciate that. And the third person I'd like to mention is Buzzzy Crazie, who is, I consider a friend. Buzzzy is our finance manager, as most of you know, but he wears many hats. He's our finance manager, our Title IX expert, he's a right-to-know guy, and I'm forgetting one or two other ones, I think.
Security.
What's that?
Security, safety.
Security and safety. I still think there's one more. And these people have done jobs just far beyond what they would normally be required to do, and I thank all of them and the rest of the staff from the bottom of my heart. Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you.
I'd like to thank the outgoing board members for your service also, especially Dave and Donna for building that new high school. I never got to teach in it, but it was the, one of the best decisions that was ever made. You know, being in a school where there were more entrances and exits and more costs for the utilities than you could even imagine when we had those, all those buildings, I want to thank you, especially for the longevity and for being there for them all. And I just want to say I'm looking forward to working together with the directors who are remaining and with the incoming board to create our vision for the future.
Ms. Cook?
Yes, sir.
Would I be able to make a couple of comments?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. One, a lot of really good news was out there today, again, from our board meeting, and I'd like to thank our administrative team, our teachers, our entire staff, who helped to make this school district successful. It's a real honor to be able to serve as superintendent and to be able to come here with such a hard-working staff, so I really appreciate that opportunity. And on that note, I will like to thank, first and foremost, the whole board, but the members that are going to be leaving for their ongoing support, their faith in me to be the superintendent. And I really appreciate, you know, all those hours where sometimes it did turn into the next day. But I would say that, you know, you were always dedicated, and it was well worth it, and, you know, clear vision and supportive of all of our staff, teachers, students, and myself. So you will be greatly missed, and I appreciate everything that you've done. And I know, Mr. Keith, yes, I'd like to, like to make a motion where he can't leave, like everyone else, but unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to do that. But not only, you want to talk about somebody, and I know this isn't the last month, thank goodness, right?
goodness, right? You're going to hang around and help me try to get through some of the winter. So that's always, we talk very early, often. But the kind of guy that'll never let you down, the kind of loyal guy that, you know, does a lot for the school system, the kind of guy that it doesn't matter when you call him, anytime of day or night, he's there for you. And you can't, you can't really replace that, so. I just want to, I don't know, you know, what vacation plans you may or may not have, so in case I didn't get a chance to publicly say that in front of everyone, you can't replace somebody like you, sir. So thank you for all your hard work. That's all I have.
Thank you. Again, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Good night, everyone.